Hi everyone, welcome to our town hall tonight, or today, depends on the part of the world you're in. I'm really happy to be here. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Simona and I'm Hospitable's community manager. I'm tuning in from Bulgaria. So just before we get started, I want to share a few quick reminders again. Our town halls are being recorded, so just so you know that they'll be made available for playback on our Hospitable YouTube channel. And you can also subscribe there for a lot of other useful content, our webinars, masterclasses. And you can also listen to the replays of the town hall here in the Clubhouse app. So as usual, we'll get started with some company updates, some company news. And then we'll let you know what's going on with the business. And then we'll open up for Q and A sessions when the time comes. Please raise your hand through the app and then we can invite folks up on stage to ask their questions. Please remember to mute yourself when you're on stage and you're not speaking as a courtesy to other people listening in. In case if you're not comfortable with being on stage or you don't want to be recorded for any reason, you can always ask your questions in the chat function where we have Zach who help us escalate some of those to the stage. That being said, I give it up to Pierre to share some company updates.
Thank you, Simona. Thank you for that, Andrew. Yeah, I'm gonna start by the big one. So just yesterday, we have finally passed four million dollars in annual run rate. That basically means we are charging our customers on a monthly basis 333,333.33. That's very important. Dollars a month. So the important thing and what we are really paying attention is especially the velocity of our growth. Here to date, that means our business has grown 62%, which means that we are on track for a growth rate above 100%, which is really what we would like to pursue as a baseline and we've been pursuing historically for the past six years. Short of COVID, obviously. And the thing is that our growth is actually accelerating. So I counted the number of months that it took us to reach those different milestones. It took us 31 months to go from zero to one million dollars. And I think Matthew and Ben were here during that phase. It took us 13 months to go to two million dollars. And it took us 19 months to go back to two million dollars because we see COVID happen and we were basically in the one to two million dollar annual revenue range. So it took us 19 months basically to recover from February to a little bit later after February 2020 to I think to put us in May, June. And then yeah, nine months last year to go to three million dollars and now six months to go to four million dollars. And the thing that changes is that we are on track to basically go and pass five million dollars within three months according to our gross projections. So that basically means every new milestone we pass basically with three months faster than the previous one. So that's pretty, that's good to hear, obviously for us and for our business. That also means that we need to make something with that money. And we have been spending a lot of time in previous weeks and actually starting from the end of June on recruitment. And now it's coming to fruition. So two weeks ago, I told you that I just returned back from Path and Lead Live and I was about to have back-to-back offer calls, job offers for people to join our team and short of just one. We basically got a full, how do you say that? We basically everyone that we made an offer to accepted. So we will be joined by brilliant people in the next few weeks. And yeah, to start with, we'd love Stefan, who is based in Munich in Germany. Will be joining us as a principal software engineer, so an extremely experienced contributor to basically help manage a group of engineers as well on a particular product objective. He's brilliant individual with some management and founder experience. We have made extended an offer to a second principal software engineer and we're waiting to hear back on that other candidate. And the idea is that we are able to really create strong teams with strong leadership and senior leadership for what we would call internally as core and connectivity. So that's everything that's actually happening currently on our product. And integration with Airbnb, Vero, Booking.com and other channels. And we want to have a specific team also working on direct and that is appropriately staffed with more engineers. Now talking about that, we just signed on Monday Glenn, who is based in Ireland, in Cork, Ireland. And we've been joining us at the end of the month of September. As a senior software engineer, he also had some stellar experience as a principal software engineer and CTO himself. And he's gonna actually be working with Ben on front end and mobile. We know that mobile is basically something that we have explored that backfired quite quickly. But we basically would love to dedicate more resources on that and that's actually something that's happening with the role of Glenn soon. Last but not least, and I actually have more job offer, more people to go through. Bobby will be joining us as a software engineer, relatively senior as well. He's based in the Netherlands. He'll be joining us as well on October 1st, same as Stefan. And actually the fun thing is that Stefan and Bobby have together worked to book Kotlager Secrets and they've been attending conferences, attending more than attending, participating on conferences. Where basically they were giving tips on other engineers. So we're very happy of having both of them join the team. That's really a vote of confidence. And yeah, we'll be helping them make those presentations on what it is to build an enterprise live application like Hospitable. We also have two product people that are gonna be starting next week, so product managers. Those are people that actually tell engineers how to build things and spend the time on basically, spend the time on designing what the best solution to solve one of our customers' problems. We'll have two very senior product managers that will be joining this Monday. The first is Andrew Shaw, an American, who has spent 15 years in China building GuestOps.com, which is very funny because it was a chatbot to help hotels interact with their guests, especially at the occasion of the Beijing Olympics. After the COVID pandemic, he decided to leave China, return to Europe. His way is based in Italy and is expected to be leading our product team, upcoming product team really, and working in particular on direct and new product expansions where there is no particular playbook and we need to be extremely good at discovering opportunities for our product to be, yeah, to be the compelling experience for our customers. And the second person that's gonna be joining our product team so far is Anmo, who is currently based in Delhi, but will be moving to Dubai very soon. Joining us next week as well, next Monday, as a senior product manager. And he will be basically owning everything that's about core and connectivity again. So the current scope of the product, what features to build or to improve, making sure that there is no friction for new customers or existing pro customers in adopting those new features and owning the existing product roadmap. So that's obviously a very big item. Why should you care? We are committed on basically making this a thing, on making Hospitable a very big thing. And that's not gonna be something that we can do in particular with existing team of five engineers working full-time for building a product. We want to basically recruit significantly more people than that. We are currently so at five people joining on the product and engineering team. We still want to recruit a minimum of three new software engineers to help us, to help us build the product that we would like to build. And especially expanding the scope to direct, to marketplaces, to investment advancement portals. So all things that basically we've been talking about for a long time during those tunnel. So we're very excited about meeting them. That's basically just for the people that have signed the contract. We are looking forward to receiving feedback from that other principal software engineer. And I've also have a few more offer calls to go through this week in other type of position. And that's basically just on my side, on the more product and engineering side. But there is a lot more that Matthew will be sharing in a moment. The second thing that's sharing the, that's kind of captivating the imagination of the team at this point in time is really based on retreats. Now, retreats are important moments for in the life of our company. We are fully distributed, we're fully remote. No one at this point is still in the same country, but that's actually changing pretty soon as we are staffing up. And we need to have some time obviously to work and collaborate in a better fashion. And especially take those strategic decisions that commit the future of our team and our company. We didn't have the chance to do that. Our last retreat was December 2019. So that's very good timing. And yeah, now that obviously we are in a better state and we are, we can travel freely and we are basically committed to having, making those requisements. Will be basically the perfect time to have those retreats for onboarding them, making them feel part of the same company in a better way than everyone that was recruited during the pandemic, of which there are many. And make those strategic decisions on our product roadmap, on how we want to service our customers, on what message we want to articulate to grow as a business. So we have made a decision that for, we'll make, we'll have two retreats. One for the American team plus some people in the Asia-Pacific region and another one in Europe. That will be with the current distribution of our team, more focused on products and engineering, but there will be a bit of both at every time. So we'll be in Las Vegas at the occasion of your M A and we decided basically to be a fantastic opportunity to extend our stay a little bit more. I will be blocking the debit, the credit card of the company beforehand. And yeah, we'll have another one in Europe. The destination still has to be decided. But that's gonna be around November, beginning of December at the latest. And so yeah, we are still one priority here is obviously to make sure that customers are gonna be serviced during that time. Now the fact is we are a planetary team for support between Asia, Europe and our American teams. So we believe that there's still gonna be some continuity, but our priority is obviously make sure that we still offer top-notch service and the top-notch product while we can still discuss about plans for the future. So that's what I wanted to share with you today and I'm looking forward to getting back with you during the Q and A. For now, Matthew will be sharing some other updates about the business. Thank you very much. Matthew, what's up?
Hey, so everything's always up here at Hospitable, like revenue growth, which is up 5.39%. That is slightly up higher than the last time we met. The customer growth is down just a hair, but that's at 5.18%, so still growing over the past 30 days without a doubt. Our NPS isn't up. It's actually the exact same as we met last time, which is good because we've had a lot of kind of fluctuation between that number. But it's again at 60 and just, you know, 50 is considered excellent, right? 70 is world class. We are striving for that 70 mark. But along with those, the score that hosts are sharing with us, they can also share with us the comments that they made when evaluating our system. So one of the ways that we use that feedback is in marketing, trying to understand what value is it that we deliver to hosts. We know what the product does. We have the intention of what it should do for you. But there's nothing better than you telling us why you made that switch, what brought you to Hospitable. And you know, after reviewing some numbers, just so you all know, ease of use is, I'd say, the number one thing that came up and it came up quite often. So you know, as we do ask you up on stage, I may ask you before you leave, what was, what was it that brought you to Hospitable? What was that challenge you were looking to solve? Or you know, what was that problem, that pain point? What were you looking for when you stumbled on that hospitable.com website? Or maybe even some of you smart B and B way back when. So don't be shy. I may ask that for you before you leave, before you walk off the stage here today. And feel free to throw some of that in the chat and Zach will make sure those make it up to me. But aside from that, aside from those numbers, we're gonna be posting a job ad, or actually I think it is officially posted for a head of sales to help lead our sales team. The right candidate is gonna be someone that's gonna help us coach our team, find ways to make our sales process even more effective and just help us really to level up to that very next level. And by next week, we should also have a director of customer support position open. So you know, we're looking with someone who has experience really scaling support teams to that next level. You know, our department needs to evolve if we're gonna be supporting the next 7,000 or so customers that come along. And we're looking for that right person who's gonna come and help us lead that evolution. On the marketing side, we have a wonderful masterclass that's gonna be coming up next week with Leo Walton, who's a co-founder. He's the VP of Growth at SuperHog. So Leo's gonna talk to us about trust, guest screening, damage protection. Tune in around, it'll be at 11:00 AM Pacific to find out how to strike that right balance between guest experience and then of course, security and much, much more. You'll get an invite in your inbox tomorrow, but you can go ahead and register. Simona is gonna share that link with you if you're interested. A fantastic chat between Leo. It's really a masterclass where he's gonna go and just teach us all things about, you know, screening, damage protection, everything that would help you to keep your rental safe. We also have a new episode of our podcast coming out, Hospitable Hosts. So this time I was chatting with Asaf Carmen of Turnover B and B. He's their CEO. He's a fantastic individual, but we talked about, you know, just different strategies for creating and building a stellar cleaning team. What are some of those things that you should consider? So especially for the new hosts in the room, there's some fantastic information there when setting up some of your best practices. And then of course, for you seasoned vets, you know, just kind of a double check to see, hey, are we doing some of those things that are gonna continue to lead to success? You know, make sure you know how to keep those cleaners happy, right? Avoid those common mistakes. So check out our social media channels where you'll be able to listen to that brand new episode. We should be posting that here soon. And then last but not least, come see us next month in Newport Beach, California at the STR Summit. We'll have Brian there, who's a sales rep and also a hospitable host. So he's gonna be representing Hospitable. You know, if you're attending the summit on the 11th through the 13th of September, make your way over, say hi to Brian. Brian not only knows the software, but he's got some great experience as a property manager as well, including increasing his portfolio. So come chat about Hospitable, but stick around for the property management chat. And I think that's pretty much it from our side. We did just have a fantastic interview for a head of marketing position. Really excited with the candidate, even though they may be here and if you are candidate, it was a great interview. But yeah, I'll pass it along down to Ben now to let you know what some of those product updates are.
Thanks so much, Matthew. That is true transparency, right? We talk about transparency, that is it. So yeah, what's new with product? So first up, we shipped an updated Booking.com connection flow in the past couple of weeks. So two of our engineers, Toby and Christian, along with some help from our customer support team, they worked together to try and figure out how the flow could be improved, where people were getting stuck or confused, how we can make it clearer which Booking.com properties we can support and which ones we can't support when it comes to pricing and whether you're using multi-inventory and things like that. So the next time you need to connect a Booking.com account to Hospitable, you're going to be using this new updated flow. There's nothing you need to do if you've already connected your Booking.com accounts. These changes are just to improve the experience for any future ones that you might add. We also had an outage back on July the 28th, so the day after our last town hall meeting. So for just over two hours, customers weren't able to access our web application. Before that, we also had some reports the web application was a bit slower than we'd like it to be. We obviously keep tabs on that. We want things to be running as quickly and efficiently as possible. Thanks so much to Ivan and the team for working through the evening, through the night to get us back online as quickly as possible. And we've been in a much better place since that day. We've had some pretty crazy growth. I think our traffic is, traffic and activity is up around sort of 50%ish from January this year. We're continuously improving our infrastructure and trying to improve that to, like Matthew and Pierre mentioned, to make sure we're ready for the next 7,000 customers as well. So yeah, direct, a few updates on direct as well. So for anybody who's new to the town hall or not familiar with direct, direct allows you to create your own direct booking websites through Hospitable or add a booking widget to your existing website if you already have your own site. That allows you to take direct bookings, which integrate straight into Hospitable with all of our messaging, all of our operations features that you would expect from us. So just a quick update on direct. So we're still in an early access phase at the moment. As Pierre mentioned, we're hiring, we're gonna have a bigger team of people to help focus on direct, which I'm super excited about. What you can do today, you can go and create sites, you can use that booking widget on your existing site and you can take bookings from guests. We're obviously working on a lot to improve that experience even further. So if you've tried direct, you may have noticed at the moment you have one site template to pick from. So you can create a website, but it's just a single template and there's a few, some configuration options in there, but not kind of a huge amount. So we're actually working with a design team at the moment to add in a bunch of new themed templates that you'll be able to pick from. So it's obviously hard to try and come up with one direct booking website design that's gonna work for every type of property. You know, city stays are a completely different vibe to beach stays and log cabins. So it's early days. We're still in the design phase for these templates. But yeah, we're looking to add five, 10, possibly even 15 sort of variations of themed sites that you'll be able to pick from when you create your direct booking website. And while we're on direct, just a quick update on payment processing as well. So for most customers, if you're using direct at the moment, you currently can't take payments directly from your guests through Hospitable. But we are still running our private pilot group for payment processing with a small number of customers. And that group can add their Stripe accounts directly to Hospitable. And when they do that, we actually evolve the booking flow for their guests to actually collect the guests' payment details as part of that flow. And then when the host accepts that booking, we charge the guest, it goes straight to your Stripe account. As I mentioned, that's in a private pilot at the moment, small number of users, but we'll keep you posted as we look to roll that out further with direct as well. And on integrations, so the Smart Locks team has been working to make improvements and fixes to our existing Schleging Code integration. So if you have Schleging Code locks already and you haven't integrated them with Hospitable just yet, you can do that by heading to Apps, Schleging Code and you'll be able to get started there. And as we shared previously as well, the team is still working hard on expanding our Smart Lock integration to integrate with RemoteLock.com, which is going to enable you to connect a whole bunch of different locks besides Schleging Code to Hospitable as well. So that's, that's still cooking away nicely in the background. That's it for products. I guess the final thing to touch on for me is, as Pierre mentioned, we're onboarding a ton of new hires into product and engineering team. Super excited to work with them. We found some really incredible people. And as the team grows, I know we're gonna have some awesome, exciting and more frequent product updates to share with you as well. So yeah, looking forward to that. That's all I've got. I'll hand it back over to Simona.
Thank you, Ben. Thank you for these last few product updates. Now it's time for questions. We already have Gabe, who is eager to ask his question. Let's invite him on stage. And anyone else who has a question, please raise your hand through the app and you can come up on stage, ask your question. And alternatively, you can also ask it in the chat. Zach is helping us there. So yeah, hi, Gabe. You're now a speaker.
Hello. So I have just one question and a few comments. I have 100 listings with you guys. Been using you for about two, three years. The business is great. You guys have definitely been improving over the past years when, you know, since you were like smart B and B, I think. My question is, are you still adding people into your pilot program for the direct booking for the payment processing? Because we did have our own site, which we were running. And then we kind of stopped and now it's kind of, we can't really figure out a way to use your direct site and then have our own payment processing?
I think, thank you, Gabe, for that question. I think Ben so far has actually been the person inviting people to that pilot. I think there are a few items that we need to check to make sure, but yeah, if you make the request, I think that probably might be helpful to both of us.
Yeah, good. So we sent out a type form a while ago to gauge some interest in direct payment processing. Do you know if you, if you received that and you responded to it?
I mean, one of my employees might have received it and disregarded it. I can email you directly.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, drop me an email, ben@hospitable.com. And yeah, we'll see if we can find you on there. If not, I can, I can reach out, have a chat with you and we can see if you'd be a good fit for the pilot.
Okay, great. And my two, I guess, feature comments that I kind of wanna request, they're not, nothing too difficult, but it would really help us improve our business. Because we run 100 listings, we have obviously dozens of employees, a lot of customer service employees. The issue that we're having is when someone clicks into, like their finger slips on their phone when a notification pops up for a message, if they're not the one on shift, it auto reads the message and then there's no way to unread a message.
I am wondering if that has not changed, especially if there are secondary users. So I trust that basically there was something that we can improve for that specific usage scenario. And to tell you, there was a particular, a lot of work actually went into that a few months ago to basically facilitate teams working, working through the inbox. So as our capacity increases, that's something that we look forward at revisiting depending on obviously the different product priorities. I, my, my sense of basically reading is that I believe it was really user-related. So if you have invited them, I'm sure you did, as a secondary user, it should show read or unread basically for their own experience, not for the entire account under your entire company. Or at least that's what would be my expected behavior. So everyone can see those threads, but I'm not sure.
Gabe, are you utilizing the resolve function within your inbox?
We're not. We tried that. It just didn't, it didn't, for whatever reason, my team didn't like it. So what's happening is when they're in it, they, if someone clicks into a message and they're not on shift, they can't, they can't unread it. So whoever is on shift doesn't miss it.
No, yeah, I understand. And because, you know, as Pierre mentioned, it doesn't seem like we have that solution in play. Like resolve and starring would be kind of the hot fixes for that. I'm wondering what didn't work with your team with resolve? You know, it has that folder there that's off the side so that you can still always access those conversations. And it would be a way for people to know like, hey, these conversations that are left in the inbox are the ones that we need to pay attention to, that we need to manage. And then being able to switch quickly between the all messages filter versus the resolved messages filter to kind of get back to any of those other customers.
I, I, because the sheer amount of listings that we have, we get so many inquiries that it almost doesn't matter. There's still pages and pages, even if we resolve everything every single day because of the amount of automatic messages that go out per reservation. So it's just like, it doesn't even, it doesn't matter. You know what I mean? They would still have to go through multiple pages of, you know, so the unread is, is, would be our fix if possible. Like, you know, you can, if you can, we're able to just select the message and unread it, that would definitely solve it. If there was just like another, you know, where you, if you click a message, the little box, the checkbox, you get, it says one conversation selected, send a message, resolve. If there was also unread, that would, that would be great.
Yeah, there's star resolve, send a message. Okay, yeah, we appreciate that.
I can hear that. And okay, what's, one other thing that's gonna change is that so far I've been basically the totalitarian master of the product roadmap. You'll be very happy to hear that's gonna change. And so what I was talking about is that Anmo, one of our senior product manager that we're, that we, that's gonna start next week, is the one that's gonna be the best contact on basically building the roadmap for those kind of, for those kind of features. And so yeah, I'm sure I will be making a note of that and showing that to him by the, by his first week. That's a good kind of case on digital line with our product priorities. What seems to be the most elegant solution, the fastest that we can deliver. What I can tell you though, especially about, and I'm sorry because I know I'm basically throwing a huge carrot at you and you want to have that from yesterday, for yesterday, is really that the, what we contemplated in our inbox for teams, part of, part of our product where it was really that the ability to assign, to have automatic assignments. Basically, if you have people on shift, you can do that. There's been a lot of work that was put into that so that you no longer face the same problem because right now what you're describing me is obviously the case that there was, there was a story, right, Gabe? Where someone opened and their guest did not receive an answer and the other people in the team struggled probably to find a conversation. Is that a correct guess?
Yeah, yeah, it just got fucked up.
There was a fuck up. And that the thing is that sure, you can do that when the person is on shift and reminding them, forcing them to click on a button when they made a mistake. The thing is that I can tell you in the same way that it gives a false sense of security. That's one process that basically we have to document is that if you're not on shift and you're basically checking, so checking the message, please mark it as unread. They, if they didn't follow the first step, they probably are unlikely to follow the second. And that's why I strongly believe.
No, the issue is that it was more like the notification pops up on all of our phones all the time. And if they just click, touch it by accident, it automatically opens the app, it automatically reads the message. So then they have to send a text to their, their team group chat saying, hey, whoever's on shift, I just by accident, my finger slipped, I just hit the notification, instead of being able to just go in themselves and unread it.
And unread it. Okay, I can, I can hear that.
When they are on shift, is there really a need for that notification? Like, are they using that as kind of their, hey, we need to jump in there? Or because like you said, the sheer volume, it seems like they may not need those notifications because they're probably just working in the inbox anyway.
Yeah, no, no, they definitely need the notifications when they're, when they're on shift. Because they could be, they're going into the properties and checking things, they're, they're mobile. So they definitely, we all need the notifications right away because it could be, you know, it definitely, the notifications definitely help. But that would be one thing. Again, I don't know how difficult it is to create an unread feature, but that would help our business. I don't know about anyone else's. But the other thing is, and this would really, really, really help, can you set a Can you set a search, like the search bar for reservation and guest name, can you also search by phone number? It's already a field, it already exists right under the person's name if you click into any of the messages. We would love to be able to search by phone number. We get a lot of phone calls into our Google Voice. We don't know who's calling. We don't want to randomly pick up voice calls because we don't know what we're entering into, what kind of call we're entering into. We would love to be able to first search the phone number and then see who it is, which reservation's calling. And then be able to call them back or answer the call.
I think that part is actually really easy to do. It doesn't, the the thing is simply that it doesn't change anything in our interface. And so that already exists, you're just adding the capacity. Uh I think we're already creating the tab, the the table uh on that other base that is about the the guest name. So that's actually something that should be there. But there, the the thing is that that simple request may be easier to do, but there are going to be performance considerations. And that what I would hate for that to be is that it slows down the entire application for everyone. Uh because you just uh entered a few, a few numbers. But that's something I know we can, we can look into and I completely appreciate. And that's something that. Was secreted uh before and about that you receive a phone call. Um especially, you know, in book direct, you don't have a, the the reservation code are processed very differently there. So it's.
Well, we use a Google Voice. We use a Google Voice as like our phone number, right, that everyone has access to. And the issue is, there's nowhere, when they, when someone calls the Google Voice, which is what shows up in their reservation or whatever. Nothing comes in, obviously. No information comes in from Google Voice besides a random phone number's calling. So we have on average twenty, thirty plus reservations a day. We don't know who it is that's calling us. So it's happened in the past where someone is spamming our call. It's happened a lot. It happens. All the time, like at least once a week, once every two weeks. Someone is literally spamming the Google Voice. So someone has to, is searching, going through every single message. Of who's like inside of our, who's uh checked in right now to to try to find the phone number. Because every time you click into a message, the phone number appears under the name. So they have to literally click into every single message to try to find the phone number that is spamming us instead of being able to just search it.
No, no, and that's immensely frustrating, of course, if you have a, if you have a guest that's already in need of urgent attention. Um no problem, uh but Gabe, I can definitely understand and hear that. I think technically there are a few considerations. That's what I wa- I was talking about. Product wise, it's a, it's an okay, definitely. Um so that's something that uh would be, would be great. Yeah, there there is a message in in the chat from from Tigran that I was, I was reading. That actually has circumvented this this problem by using webbooks and Tigran, Tigran is a very, very, very proud user. Of of our webbooks product. Um and basically it creates a contact in the V R P systems, basically uh having a bit of custom development there. Uh to be able to to identify it so that it, if if you have those those contacts, those contacts that can be. Integrated uh with your your call center solution, uh so that you can then identify on the call. Uh what is uh who who is actually calling you. That's a different problem. That's a different implementation. Uh I think definitely we can, we can do our part. Um we can do our part for the, for identifying the guests that are calling you. And I think I I wouldn't even want to have the the full numbers uh being required here. I think the idea is of the last, the last four.
Sure, the last four. Yeah, the last four of the phone number or the whole phone number, I don't think it matters, you know what I mean?
If you can copy paste it, but if you are on the go and you already have the guest on the phone, uh and you need to search uh to type something down. Uh it's, it has to be shorter. Ben, sorry, you wanted to say something?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think the partial search would be great with differences in like formats and country code, you know, it might come through with the country code. We might store it with, with or without. Uh the other thing I was gonna say with the the VoIP integration thing, uh when you search our inbox, this is a little bit techie. Um we put your search query into the URL, like the address bar. Um so when I used to work in enterprise, uh I saw a lot of VoIP integrations where like you could actually have the VoIP system. Load up a tab with hospitable with that search criteria already in, if that makes sense. So it actually pop up as you get called in hospitable, uh which I thought would be, that could be pretty cool.
But that's only in the future, once we actually get the phone numbers.
Exactly, exactly, yeah.
So you could get a link for, to basically generate, concatenate basically the phone number at the end of a URL. Uh to land directly on the conversation with a guest, hoping that there is only one conversation. Because there may be, you know, several conversations at the same time. But anyway, it will present you with search results for it. So yeah, thank you, thank you, Gabe. Uh thank you, Gabe, for for the, for the different, for the different points. So basically marking as unread. Is something that adds a button and um as Matthew was sharing, there's basically. Base value for our product is really the fact that it's easy to use. I think it's something that you appreciate. Uh I think there, what I, what I would like is simply having a product team to think about the problem of this one. Uh and find what is actually the the most elegant solution, ideally to prevent that from uh from ever occurring. Um and then being able to remediate the matter efficiently without indeed going through the pain right now as having someone that's of duty. Um to be, to be letting know their colleagues. And then definitely looking for the phone numbers. That's something that is uh just a matter of engineering. Uh good one, uh but I think that's, that's, that's very easy to, that's easier to to implement for us. I can give you a timeline for this because I know that the developer that will be working on that is not here on the call. Um but I'm sure he will be pinged and he has already a few issues on his list uh to solve uh for the short term.
Thank you, guys. Really appreciate it. And you guys have built a a a great, great software, really.
Yeah, but it cannot look for phone numbers, you know, we're gonna do that.
I'm not moving a guestie for that. I can tell you that much.
Thank you very much, Gabe. Too bad for Guesty, though. I'm sure they would love you. Um Simona.
Yes, thank you, Pierre. Thank you, Gabe. Um now we have Uncle Festus on stage.
Hey, guys, how are you doing?
Doing fine. How about you? It's been a while.
I know, I know, I know. I was just gonna, first thing for Gabe, I was just gonna give him a heads up that what we do, because we run into the same problem and we use Google Voice. Is once we get the reservation, um we literally get the email and we scrape it and use it to create a a Google contact. So we will never pick up a phone without knowing who is calling. And if you don't show up with it, that means you don't have an active reservation. Because the only time. You your name will be there is if you're actually booked, means that we get in both your name and your phone number. Um what I was calling.
Sorry, sorry, and I and I'm basically circling back, but that means you ask the guest for their, for their confirmation code?
So, so we get an email um from our PMS, literally with. The phone number and the name as a booking. We scrape that information to create a contact.
Okay, got it.
Because the template comes in, it always comes the same way. It has the the name, phone number. So it's already a a a a a Google contact.
Okay, got it. So you you're passing the email with a phone number to to basically do that. It's not something that you ask the guest about it.
No, so we don't, so automatically.
That was a part that was missing. Thank you very much.
Um I guess my question is just trying to figure out from a feature perspective or how we solve the problem. Is we're looking for a way to automate a link that we're sending to guests. So every single time guests book. We send them a link to check in. Um and this link is personalized to them. But we're trying to figure out how to automate that. In being able to pass that information back to hospitable without having to, because right now what happens is we literally have to go in manually. And paste the link to each conversation.
What's the link made up of? What's the personalization part? You put like the reservation code?
Um no, so it has a unique num- like a unique reservation ID generated from.
Okay, so the you, the link is generated beforehand. You don't have the ability to generate it.
We, so so explain that. How 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 would that make a difference?
So we had, I had this issue previously with a host where they were creating a URL and the last part of the URL, the unique identifier was the reservation code. So the way that we.
But where do we get the reservation code from?
So what we did is we put in, in the one of their templates, we put the URL, everything up to the la- that first, second to last slash. And then we used one of our short codes for the reservation code to fill out the rest of that sentence, to fill out the rest of that URL. So it was, you know, hospitable dot com forward slash, and then it was their unique reservation code. And then just by putting it in there, using that short code that we had, it was always able to upload the exact URL they needed. Because it was connected to that reservation code on Airbnb and Verbo specifically.
Oh, okay. So so, okay, so so, yeah, no, we we don't use the reservation code from Airbnb yet now, over here. I I I see how that would work. Okay, yeah, but that that's not, but we actually have a unique reservation code for the reservation, which is not from the the OTA.
Yeah, something personal. So yeah, that that would be the only solution that I can think of is if you had something that was relatable back to the reservation. We could input that, you know, other than that, there's not gonna be any way for you to share that information back into hospitable other than a manual add.
Okay, alright, thank you so much.
Yeah, I'm trying to think. Yeah, no worries. And I mean, and that is the the code, is it tied to your unique reservation code that you're making? Or it's just random generated? You get that code from whatever system you're using?
Yes, so so we get the code, we get the code from the system. The system generates it. So it's not us, we're not manually. So it just, all of it allows, it allows it to know what reservation it is, because that already has the information from the guest. So it has the check-in day, checkout day, stuff like that. Then they go through the whole process of verifying the ID and all that.
Seems like the only way would be like with an integration with that system where we could pull that information, share it to reservation and then create its own. Short code, but yeah, probably not something that would be on the immediate roadmap for us. Pierre, Ben, you got any other thoughts there?
Yeah, no, sorry, I don't, I don't have, I don't have much. Uh it's really. What you're looking is, what's your own? What I contemplate would be a solution uh for, for example, for our own customers when we want to be able to segment them or having a. An extra bit of information associated with them is really kind of data enrichment. And it seems like basically the the most long-term solution, again, not something we're considering at this point, would be really. Having an API endpoint uh where you have a custom value, uh a custom key value pair. And and so therefore you can enter like an arbitrary reservation ID that you generate on your system or the party system generates for you. And then basically currently use that as a as a short code. I think we're quite a few months away from considering a a feature request like this one. Um but but that's, that's interesting, that it's always about facilitating the personalization of the of the messages. Uh in that regard, the the short-term fix really would be like, you know, understanding what is your leeway. Uh on generating that link, they're generating that link in the first place. And if you can do that, you have several suggestions or in in the chat. Ours really is relying on the, on the confirmation code. Um unique to the, to the OTA, but indeed you are operating as a business probably on the, a different type of reservation ID. And yeah, Tigran, Tigran again is referring to basically using the the check-in with the property name. And then you can pass again uh the check-in day, checkout date, so you you're able to identify uh something, something differently based on that. Um by the way, Tigram, uh you can use the property name short code now. You don't need to have a custom code. Uh I see you're, you're sitting up in the chat. Um so that's, that's really would be my first view is really finding what you can customize on on the other side. Uh for us, I know that basically our API enrichment is something that I would love to consider. But I think that's a surprise for everyone else, uh that I've not heard about something like that.
I have a question, though. So i- is it possible to send a message through the API to a particular conversation?
There is no conversation API, there is no send a message API. I, this is one of the things where honestly, we believe, I I strongly believe that there would never be. Um in that it's. The the way, we we receive a lot of features like that uh from from third parties. People, companies that basically would like to integrate with us and obviously want to have an endpoint to to send a message. The rate is that, that's, it it's not, it's not a technical challenge, is this really? Why would you want to send a message? From a third party through hospitable when we actually have spent so much time on developing a system with those short codes, with those custom coding? We keep and we keep on, on basically building features to support more uh more usage scenario. Uh to basically send it completely blank from your own system. So that's something that we, we could consider, but there has to be a really strong company business case.
So I I I guess my question is, so moving forward, you're going to have to be able to get data from somewhere else, right? And so if you're looking at dynamic data, that dynamic data might not always be stored in hospitable, correct? So if the dynamic data. Okay, so for example, right, right now, you're having dynamic data on locks. Okay, so the code, the code to the, to the, to the door is a dynamic data. So it's, it's a five-digit number, right, that is not generated from hospitable. It's generated from sleds or from remote lock. Because for example, let's use, we use remote lock, for example. So that code is not generated. It has to be confirmed from a third-party database, right? That bit of information.
Actually a bad, that's actually a bad example. Sorry to say, to tell you that, because actually the point of this integration is that we create the code. And we create the code according to to the settings. So that's what, that's a.
Yeah, but but you, but you have to confirm the code, right? Because, because again, it it might be a code that already exists in the system. So it has to be confirmed that it has been sent in and even accepted.
I'm not sure about the send and accepted, but there's maybe there are some things, but delivery, what I would tell you is that we are the one creating the code. If a code already exists, we'll create another one.
But yes, you are correct that there are going to be instances where we're gonna need to pull data in. For example, with direct booking websites, we're gonna need to be able to connect with others' direct booking websites. So if they're not processing payments with us. You know, there, a way to pull those reservations into our system seamlessly so that you can communicate with those guests who may have booked from. You know, uh a third, your direct booking site or some other site that you're using that you can provide an API connection to. So that's absolutely the ability to pull in some data is something that we'll need to do at some point. And, you know, like we said, I mean, ideally, whatever system you're using, we need an integration where they create that. Or we prompt them to create it, they create that URL and then they can send it back. You know, that's something that would just be. A far ways out. Before that, we need to be able to pull the reservation detail because we have far many reservations that are sitting outside of our system. That we need to make sure that we're efficiently and effectively getting them within our system.
Adding a reservation, for example, that's a, that's a perfect example. Posting a message, I'm a bit dubious. But that's my only.
And that may change when we have three strong product managers that can sell you on that, right?
Yeah, you never know. You never know.
None of them French, luckily.
Who, who'd have thought product needs to have a sales ability to it, right? There's, there's definitely that in there. So. So yeah, you're you're correct that eventually we will need to be able to pull in data into our system. Um I mean, technically, I I I think we can, right? We can actually, pricing updates can be done through a third party that they push through our API. Uh but not, you know, nothing along the lines that you need at this moment in time.
Yeah, because we, yeah, we have not uh basically dedicated resources on that. It was really facilitating the, the pricing integrations.
But we are, we have, we're working with a third-party agency right now to completely, uh I guess. In in sales speak, clean up the API, right, and make it a bit more palatable so that it's easier to use, it's easier to navigate going forward. And and easier to be able to facilitate some of these integrations that we're looking to build.
Yeah, cleaning up is the technical word too. Thank you, uh Uncle, for a few questions and sparking this debate. Uh definitely, I do foresee we spend more time and more resources on API uh and to facilitate those third-party integrations. And uh yeah, that's, we are looking forward to having the capacity to work on those. Uh because I think that's, that's gonna be key and we are, we're fully aligned on the objective. It is basically a matter of strategy on how to get there. So thank you, Uncle. Uncle Festus, for sharing those questions with us.
Thank you. And we've had Dominic for quite some time on the stage. Hi, Dominic.
Hello. Bonjour, thank you for inviting me to the party. Um brand-new customer as of yesterday, uh sorry, I joined a few days before that. But as of yesterday, we have our properties and channels integrated, uh very happy so far.
Woo, congrats.
Thank you. Yeah, did set up the direct booking website and was really thrilled about that. And it was actually news to me today hearing this clubhouse that I I actually expected, I have one booking and I thought that. Their payment was going to be processed through the direct booking website. So I'm glad to actually find out I have to charge them some other way. Um and that's fine. But one, one feature request I did have that I discovered, and I hope it's not something that is there and can be solved by support. I have not, I, and I promise I did reach out to support first before bringing it here. Um I just haven't heard back. But uh I see on the direct bookings, uh there's the potential to alter the reservation. And what I was hoping to do with that function was to actually change the dollar amount and give that, give this person a discount. And I noticed really, the only thing I can do when I get there is to change the dates, which of course would not affect the dollar amount. But I want to keep the dates the same. And just change the um amount of their reservation uh manually somehow. So um if that is something I could do now, that's great. And if not, that's something I would definitely like to do in the future. So thank you so much.
I think I would direct to Ben because I know he's been working quite a lot on those recently.
Yeah, absolutely. Uh let me just turn my fan off. Uh yeah, Dominic, I think um, I think I heard your request actually from the support team earlier. So uh yeah, that was. So, uh, yeah, that was, was definitely heard and considered. Um, so where we're at at the moment with direct, as I mentioned, we're still in kind of, um, early access. Uh, so you can make alterations to your direct bookings at the moment, but as you mentioned. Uh, it's kind of limited at this point to, to the dates, right? Um, a lot of stuff's gonna change here, as Pierre mentioned, we're bringing on a product team, we're bringing on more engineers around direct. This is, this is early days for us, so this sort of feedback is really useful to hear. The only workaround I would have for you, uh, in the meantime, potentially, is, um, it is a bit of a workaround. Uh, is to actually update the price for those dates that have been booked, um, before you make that alteration. Uh, it would be a bit manual, you'd have to kind of figure out what the nightly rate should be to reflect what you want that, uh, reservation to show the guest. But I'm pretty sure that, in a slightly roundabout way for now, would allow you to, uh, to change the amount that you're charging for that reservation, if that makes sense.
That, sorry, that, that means, uh, so that, that means Dominic would have to go on his calendar for that property. Select the dates that have been the subject of this direct booking, uh, adjust the, so discounts with a nightly rate. And then adjust?
And then make the alteration, that's right, and then, and then triggering.
That's going to be changed in the alteration then, because the dates are going to be the same, the property is going to be the same.
The dates will be the same, the property will be the same, but I'm pretty sure, uh, the, the new kind of cost and price would be picked up. At the time you make that alteration. Um, so when you make any alterations in direct at the moment. Uh, we'll take into account the current price that's set at the time. So for example, if you're going to change to different dates. Uh, we pick up the, the, the price that you have set for those dates at the point in time you make the alteration. Uh, because obviously you may have updated your price, pricing since, uh, since that booking was made. It is a bit of a roundabout workaround for sure. Um, I think, as I mentioned, we heard this from your request earlier, I think we've had a few other people who've kind of requested the ability to. Uh, like discounts for sure is, is something that's on our radar, uh, as well as kind of considerations around, you know, direct markups. Uh, and things of that nature as well.
And upsetting, so basically, early check-in, late checkout, other services, so basically blending them in, which is going to be important. In relation with, with payment processing, okay, I'm definitely see the point. I think for what I was expecting. Sorry, I, I'm sorry, I was, I was very far away. Um, so I, I was saying that, yes, I was, um. Yeah, we, I think we, we discussed about those, about upsetting, uh, and, um, basically charging more clients in relation, more. Charging a party, specific guest, uh, with a higher amount. Um, I, uh, I think basically, I think it's written somewhere in part of the roadmap and the specs that we had for alterations for direct. And we revamped basically also alterations with, with Airbnb, um, that we're able to, to initiate as well. Um, and I think we basically intentionally left on the side the question of payouts, because there are basically a lot of questions that go. Uh, around basically payment processing and authorization of the guest for the payment. Um, so that's one of the reasons why we decided to leave that on the side for now. But Airbnb, for example, does allow those alterations, uh, with a greater and an inferior. Uh, pay, total, total amount, and so definitely we, we allow, we should be able to have that in time. Obviously, we, we, we created a bit to change and cancel reservation on direct, um, to facilitate the private pilot. That feature is understood and we didn't prioritize it because we basically wanted to validate other items as part of the, of the product so far. Uh, but I can tell you that I do foresee Dominic that in the future we'll be able definitely to, to alter the, the payouts. I don't know if the payout is the right word really, but alter the amount, um, that would be charged by the, by the guest in a up and down way.
Yeah, that, that little, that little field in the alter reservation, uh, screen that says total amount to be paid. It looks so clickable and I was ready to just click on it and change the number manually, you know? But I, I understand it's harder work behind the scenes to actually make that kind of thing happen, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you for your patience and understanding. The question here behind is that if you have a reservation for five hundred dollars. And you all of a sudden decide to charge one thousand dollars, there may be an issue in terms of credit card acceptance on payment processing.
That makes sense, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Dominic.
Alright, uh, we're almost at the hour. No more raised hands, but maybe we have a little bit time just for more, one more question from the chat. And we have a question from Bobby, he's asking, has there been any develop, any movement on creating a better financial reporting system with hospitable? Would be great to see actual payouts and be able to run reports on total revenue through OTAs we're using. Would love to be able to pull monthly and annual revenue.
We just finished recruiting for call, for direct, the third team we'll be recruiting is going to be analytics, metrics. That is something that would be too much of a challenge for us to execute and maintain, which is the problem that we faced the first time when we were working on metrics. Um, so if we're serious about it, considering our growth, I definitely see us looking to recruit a team to work on those items specifically. With a product manager, with some senior engineers, and with a bunch of engineers to act, to make it a reality. And I expect that soon. Uh, but that's going to be depending on the growth of the, of the business so far and the ability to onboard, uh, the new members of the team. We're, we're growing basically sixty, the team sixty percent, uh, in a matter of weeks. Uh, so we, we'll see already we are, uh, to onboard those, those people in our team first. Um, but yes, that's a very popular request. Matthew is basically bugging me with that every week and rightly so. And I'm pretty sure I said last week during the panel that I would not be able to, to walk in the street. Uh, without having a request about metrics and analytics, so for my own safety, I think I really need to, to have that implemented sometime soon. Um.
Bugging? What, what are the three words you describe, you describe, uh, how would you describe me is, is the question I'm gonna have you on a one-on-one tomorrow?
Driven, uh, Matthew is driven and passionate about metrics and analytics. And is, and rightly so, because definitely it, it's, it's, it's a product opportunity for us, because the job of our product is. Okay, sure, reducing your, the amount of energy that you need to put into your short-term mental business, but at the same time, it's also helping you make more money. Uh, and we, I can help you do that, for example, by distributing, uh, your listing onto more channels than you would otherwise contemplate. Uh, direct is, is a part of that. We are going to need to simply build those metric analytics to show that we are delivering value to you as a customer. Um, and that's really where it's there. It needs to be incredibly reliable. I've heard from an accounting company that's working in the space that there is, it's very difficult to find the property management software. Including those that spend millions on R and D, to find reliable, those reliable numbers. There is also challenges in terms of integration, so we need to clean the data, um, that we get from those OTAs, because sometimes it works. And the, most of the time it works, and that one time, um, where it's not going to be accurate, that's going to be causing you probably a weekend of investigation. Uh, short time before the deadline that you have to do a tax filing or something like that, uh, or definitely run your, your owner statement. Um, and that, that's also part of the, of the challenge, uh, which is why I don't want to take it. Uh, just too, too early without having the actual capacity of working on this. Um, so yes, metrics and analytics, that's the next thing I'm looking forward to have as a specific squad, a specific team within, within hospitable.
Oh, I, I've been bugging them enough, we're about to get the whole team, there we go, that's how you do it.
That's what we do now, usually it'd be, like, I think like two years ago, we could recruit people, now we need to recruit teams, uh, to actually have an impact. That's, yeah, Nikita, if Nikita was here, I would basically be facepalming very intensely, um, for what I, what I've just said. Okay.
Wonderful. Well, thank you for the question, Bobby.
And thank you, Simona, for raising it.
Yep, think so, um, yeah. Think we're at the hour now.
Yeah.
And, uh, yeah.
Thank you very much, thanks, sorry, thank you very much, everyone, I have to basically return to changing diapers and making sure, giving feeding the bottle. Uh, to a baby that's very driven, very passionate, very French, I'm sorry for that.
Wonderful, thank you all so very much, we appreciate you attending, we appreciate you always giving us your support and, and your, your vote of confidence here with your feature requests. You know, just the kind words that you share. Um, if, we know that when you're asking for those features, you truly care, because if not, you would have just went elsewhere. So thank you so very much for that and thanks for helping to grow hospitable. Um, we appreciate it and have a great rest of your Wednesday.